I'd like to call the March fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Hallman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business today are the council minutes for the meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council meeting minutes of the February fourteen, two thousand thirteen, meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Hallman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
On matters of special privilege today, we have two things. Jack, do you want to talk about two pieces of news we've recently-
Yes, sir. -gotten? One of those is a notice we received from the Sunshine Review. They do a sunny award every year, and it's the fourth year running. And essentially, they rate governmental websites for their openness and transparency, and the city received an A rating for that, so I'm very proud of that. And Kate Hoving, of course, is the mastermind behind keeping all of that information up there, along with the IT department and a lot of other folks, so we appreciate all the efforts that they do to keep the information not only available but easy to find. The other announcement this week concerns the Williamsburg Municipal Building, and we have received the official notification that the building has received certification as LEED Silver Certified. And LEED, again, stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. The total of thirty-six points were submitted for and thirty-six points were awarded. The effort was led by Guernsey Tingle in order to put all that application together and also to design the building to achieve those points. Some of the things that we now, and the reason this comes somewhat after the fact, because the building's been in operation now for two years, because they need to show results and not just intentions. So, building energy use has been reduced from $2.47 a square foot down to less than $1.36 a foot. The building water use has been reduced by forty-five percent. The twenty-three percent of the building materials were recycled content. Twenty-seven percent of building materials were regionally sourced. The geothermal HVAC system with ninety-six wells was a component of that as well. Daylighting, lighting control systems, all the materials having low VOC content for good indoor air quality, pervious paving, so these are just some of the things that contribute to a LEED certification.
Thank you. And on the website, and again, Kate and Mark and all your people, thank you very much for all the effort that goes into that. And again, the whole building team deserves credit for building and design team for the municipal project. Anybody like to make further comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Next order of business, public hearings. I believe we have none today, if I'm correct. And that leads us to reports, the first of which are the monthly financial statements. Anything in particular to point out?
One thing to point out, and Phil will come up to the podium. You'll notice on your sheet, on page five, which includes the room tax, meals taxes, sales tax receipts, there shows a large percentage increase in activity in January recorded in February. Phil is here to explain that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hallman and members of council.
Thank you.
In the past, we've, from time to time, we've shown numbers being kind of skewed because of delinquent taxes coming in, but this report just shows the taxes as they do come in. What I would like to do with your concurrence would be to change this format around a little bit next month and thereafter, actually put the numbers in the proper categories for the months the activity actually occurs for, not when it's received. It'll give a better indication and it'll keep it from skewing the way it has, especially in big months where there's big delinquencies like the collections we received during February.
So, that explains what we thought was very good news of a twenty-nine percent increase. It wasn't truly a twenty-nine percent increase in activity, just in collections.
It's about eleven, almost eleven percent, but I went back and redid all the numbers. On the report, it shows about a four-tenths of a percentage point below for the year. It's really about a tenth of a percent. So, it's very close, but I think it's the right thing to do to change these numbers around.
So, future reports will have the dollars attributed to the month in which they were actually taxed.
Yeah. Essentially, it'll be a dynamic report rather than a static way it is now.
You might think about, and I haven't thought about this very much, but if there's a month where there's a particular, a past month where there's a particular change, and you might want to set some limit to that, you might want to note that on there with a footnote or something, so that we have a sense of sort of what's going on.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Any questions?
One question. How would this change in recording or reporting the information impact or affect the year-over-year comparison?
We'll go back and redo all the numbers, so you can actually see from one month to the next. That's the actual activity, not the money that was received during that timeframe. That's really the only difference.
And you can do that without a significant amount of work, or it's-
Yeah, it took me about ten minutes this morning to do the room tax back five years.
Okay, okay.
I think it's just more helpful.
So, that's already done, and for the last five years, those year-to-year changes reflect the new accounting?
Yes, and if somebody came in and paid a tax that was a year old, we would adjust that box. And we don't have any taxes that old as it is.
Yeah, right.
Two or three months at the most.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Phil, I, our, yeah, the mayor and I were just talking about this twenty-eight percent increase earlier and trying to figure out what that was, and so that's a perfect explanation. I recall back in September, there was a big increase in sales tax, and I'm not saying that is a similar anomaly, but will you apply what you just described to us for the rooms to other taxes, sales tax, meals tax, or room tax, meals tax?
Sales tax, we get one number from the state per month, so we can't do it to that. That is what it is. They know what's delinquent up there. They report back to us what they've been reported to, so they hand us the money two months later.
Right. And so, there's no way for us then to go and say, if they did collect delinquent tax that had actually belonged five months ago?
No, we've got no idea.
So, that one can't be adjusted, but just room and meals?
Room and meal, and obviously the $2 large.
Any other questions? Phil, thank you very much. That's helpful. Anything else, Jack, on financial, any questions on financial statements?
Yes, sir.
Monthly operating reports, anything in particular-
Nothing in particular to point out this month.
Any questions for Jack on operating reports? Okay. Next order of business is city manager reports, and we have a number. The first of those is the Williamsburg Regional Library Fiscal Year two thousand fourteen Budget Presentation.
Yes, sir. A little bit different in the process this year on budget. We're asking the library to come in at this meeting and give us their proposed budget. We, rather than doing that in the evening session, I'll just free up a little bit more time with the budget work sessions for other budgets. So, John Mormon, the library director, is here in order to give you his presentation. John?
John, welcome.
Welcome. Mayor Hallman, members of city council, city manager title, and others, it is an honor to come before you today to present the Williamsburg Regional Library FY fourteen budget request. Before I start, I would like to indicate that several board members are present from the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. We have Jean Van Tol, who is chair, she's sitting back there in the back. We have Sarah Hoagland, who is vice chair, and we have Vicki Herrick, who is your city administrative representative. So, they are back there helping me today to present this report. I would like to start out, you have a document on your iPads that indicates, highlights fiscal year two thousand thirteen. I'd like to go over this just a little bit, emphasize that we have a strategic plan, and the priorities of that plan are creating a comprehensive communications plan, expanding offerings of digital content, rearranging spaces in both library buildings, providing opportunities for staff development, and expanding services for teenagers. This past year, we have made accomplishments toward each one of those. I've had discussions with city council before about audiobooks, ebooks. We have expanded our collection in the past year, and as of January two thousand thirteen, users had downloaded thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight items from this collection. They are proving to be very popular. We also have worked with staff development. During the past year, we repurposed a Aitken library position to focus on service to teenagers and have launched a teen advisory board and regular teen programming. The library was honored to again receive a four-star rating in Library Journal's Index of Public Library Service for two thousand twelve. The library is one of just eighty-five public libraries in the country and the only four-star library in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The rating is based upon four performance per capita service indicators: library visits, circulation, program attendance, and public internet computer uses. Our highest part there was in our program attendance. We have excellent programs with good attendance, and this helps us with that rating. As was mentioned earlier, on February fourteenth of this year, the Institute of Museum and Library Services announced that we are finalists for the nation's highest honor conferred on museums and libraries, the National Medal for Museum and Library Service. We will know toward the end of April whether we are one of the five award winners for that. You have in front of you our proposed budget, which was approved by the Library Board of Trustees at their January twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, meeting. This fiscal year, two thousand fourteen, proposed budget shows an overall increase of three point eight-two percent, and uses the circulation-based funding formula as per the memorandum of understanding we the fourth amended and restated contract. Big mouthful there. By contract, our employees follow James City County's compensation plan. The funds requested in the compensation section of the budget reflect the latest guidance from James City County. The proposed budget shows a three percent increase for salary and wages and a ten percent increase in health insurance. These account for the overall three point four-seven percent increase over last year in compensation expenditures. The proposed collection budget shows an increase of seven point five percent to include funding for downloadable audiobooks and music. The operations section shows an increase of approximately four percent as a result of increases in several contracts and outgoing demand for goods and services. If you will go to the last, next to last page where it talks about our revenue sources, you will note that the Williamsburg Regional Library is asking from the city of Williamsburg for the fiscal year that ends June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, the same funding that you have given us for the current FY two thousand thirteen budget. With that, I open it up for any questions that members of city council may have.
John, thank you very much, and we thank the board members for being here as well, and I'll turn it to council for any questions they might have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mormon, can you talk to us a little bit about the challenges, if there are any, that the library faces with expanding its offerings and downloadable content?
The challenges it faced there is what I call a very fluidity of the market, particularly when you get into e-content. Publishers are still struggling with this type of method of disseminating information to the public. Some publishers will not sell e-content to libraries. Others will sell e-content at a tremendously increased rate over what you can buy it, say, from Amazon, or if you as an individual wanted to buy it. For example, Random House will allow libraries to buy e-content. However, the book that you see, the e-content item that you see in Amazon for $20 is $95 if a library buys it. And this is why you see in our collection very few items that come from Random House in our e-collection. We cannot justify spending that level of funding to get those materials. So, until a system is worked out that enables the publishers to feel comfortable that they will have a revenue stream that they can work with, and libraries are able to access this material the same way that we access other materials in other formats, you will see a period of change. Right now, we use a vendor, because that's the best way for us to get that, but with that vendor, the e-material that we have is only leased. We do not own it. We lease it, because that's the only way we can get it. And as you can see with ebooks, you check out an ebook, you get it for a certain period of time, and it goes away, but no more than one person can check out that book at any one time, so they're holds. You look at downloadable audiobooks, and those downloadable audiobooks that we have, a hundred people can check them out at one time. That's the way the system works there. So, it's a challenge, and it's a challenge to keep current in it, to look and see what the next iteration of how this material is going to be made available to libraries occurs. So, it's a challenge.
Bear with me here for just a moment. If the library purchases a physical book, only one person can check that book out at a time?
That's correct.
If the library purchases a license for an ebook, only one person can read that book at a time?
That is correct.
So, what's the difference?
Well, the difference is the cost of ebooks. For example, you get-
But what's the difference to the publisher?
To the publisher, they are concerned about piracy. They are concerned about copyright, because all of this has not been decided yet, and that is why some publishers sell no ebooks to anybody, and some sell them only through certain vehicles. It's a challenge of copyright, the challenge of piracy, the not really being comfortable with this new format that is out there.
And are you seeing increased demand for this type of product?
We are seeing people that, as they become more familiar with the vehicles that are downloaded to, the Kindles, the iPads, whatever else, yes, there is more demand. I talked, I had a person come talk to a group of older individuals about two weeks ago, and since then, I have talked to several people in their seventies and eighties. Oh, yeah, I'm using my Kindle now to download books. So, the demand is there once people realize they can do it. But the problems are, is you can be eighty-fifth on the list for an ebook, the same as you can be eighty-fifth on the list for a popular book. But again, with a lot of the popular hardback books, we will buy ten, fifteen copies of them to help with the initial demand. We can't afford to buy ten to fifteen licenses for an ebook.
And can you speak a little bit to the summer reading program and all the, how that's going from year to year?
We are expanding our summer reading program again this year. The state is working through a new method that is going to assist us to better evaluate what impact summer reading actually has upon the children who participate. You may remember, five or six years ago, we hired Johns Hopkins University to do an evaluation, and it showed that summer reading helps those students in grades four and below. When they get back to school, they have retained more and they may have progressed. The older child got, there wasn't really a statistical advantage to it. So, we're adding new programs, we're adding new materials. One of the things that we are doing to assist the Williamsburg James City County School System, at the end of their summer school, we will be passing out, courtesy of our friends at the library, two new books to each individual in that program, to again encourage reading, get them used to it, get it in their homes, get parents used to seeing it. So, these are things we're doing. We're always fine-tuning it to try to see what we can do to make it better.
And similar description of progress with mobile library services?
Yes, we have continued to increase our mobile library services out into the community. We don't have a bookmobile anymore. We have several mobile vehicles that, depending on where we go, provide materials in different ways. And I believe right now, we go to twenty-nine different sites on a monthly basis. These include assisted care living places, daycare centers, schools, community stops. And where we go to assisted living centers, we have a vehicle that we can put book trucks on and then cart them out into the residence area, so we meet with the residents where they are. With neighborhood stops and some of our daycare stops and preschool stops, we have a vehicle that can actually come onboard. We have computers on there, so they can use that as well as gather material. And we will be purchasing another vehicle in the coming year to upgrade that service as well.
And last question, could you just speak a little bit, we've talked about this before, but with the current consideration of a reconstruction of the Stryker Center here and what the expanded office and meeting, or the relocated office space, but the expanded meeting space would do for the library, do you have any idea roughly how many groups on a monthly or yearly basis you actually turn away as opposed to just fitting in in a different time slot from what they've originally requested?
I'm beginning to gather statistics on it, and I would say every month, we turn away maybe ten, fifteen groups, because that space is taken, and there is no other space we can fit them in. And I know from my own experience as library director, there have been a number of times when I want to hold a meeting, and I go look, and there's no space in the building to hold a meeting. So, it is a problem, and this is why, one of the reasons we're looking forward to hopefully seeing the Stryker project come through, is to enable us to increase the available space that we have for our community groups to use and also for the library to use for our programming efforts, plus the ability to enable us to take technology we do not have now and make our programs available throughout the community for people in their homes, in their schools, et cetera.
Well, this is our annual opportunity, and I only get the privilege of doing this first, because I get to speak first, but I'm sure everybody will do the same thing when they have the chance, to thank you on behalf of the library staff, to thank the library board for the terrific work that you all do in providing a service that is not only incredibly valuable to every member of this community, but it's something that I think every member of this community has great pride in, and is one other example of why Williamsburg is such, Williamsburg and James City County and Upper York County are such a great place to live. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you, and again, thanks needs to go to all of you, because you helped make it possible through the support that you give from a financial nature, and through the city for the assistance you give on our operational budget. So, thank you, too.
Scott?
Steel part of Paul's question, but as far as, you know, this four-star, which is amazing that we've been able to maintain that at, you know, at flat cost to us, that's impressive in itself. But with the potential new Stryker space, how will that play into how that particular rating agency sees value in the Williamsburg Library beyond what you mentioned?
What you are looking at, as is indicated here, Library Journal, who does this, has four indicators: library visits, circulation, program attendance, and public internet computer use. Our circulation has gone down a little bit in the past year, because the economy is improving, and there are several other factors involved. Library visits will continue, I think, to increase, because we'll have more space there to get more people in. That will help program attendance, definitely. The more space we have, the more people that come in, that helps that. Now, public internet computer uses, we are working with them on, because what has occurred over time is, as more and more people have access to computers elsewhere, our use of our in-house computers has gone down. However, we are now able to count every single individual who uses our Wi-Fi during the day, and I am discussing with them, they don't want to count that as a statistics, but I'm arguing that is internet use that we facilitate. And so, that, actually, we've done some statistical adding to our current report, which I think you may have seen, if not, it'll be in next month's. They indicate that increases at about thirty-three percent, because there are large numbers of people that come in on a daily basis, drop their laptop down, their tablet or whatever, and hook up to our Wi-Fi, sometimes to the point where it slows down, because we don't have enough bandwidth, and that's something, a challenge again, that we're going to need to work with as we go down the road.
You made one comment, you said, as the economy is improving, circulation's gone down. Can you tease that out a little bit?
Basically, over history, public library use goes up when the economy goes down. People are looking for work, they have extra time to read, to study, to do whatever. When the economy goes up, and in a household, maybe both a husband and wife have a job, library use goes down. That is just a cyclical pattern, and we increased from about two thousand seven to two thousand eleven, a good bit over the earlier part of the twenty-first century, and now we're seeing a decline, not great, but it is a four to five percent decline.
Bill?
John, thank you for being here. You talked a little bit about it with e-readers and the discussion there. Talk a little bit, or expand a little bit, if you would, about any relationship and partnership you have with the Williamsburg James City County School System. And for example, when my eldest child was coming through Matthew Alely in middle school and was part of the AR reading program, you know, we would go to the library, flip through the sheet of paper, and find a book. How has that graduated to this electronic modem? My second child now, she has a Kindle, and she finds her books.
What we do is, we have a signed partnership with the Williamsburg James City County School System. We have a partnership team that consists of some members from the school district and some of my staff that meet quarterly. We do a variety of things, pardon me, with the school system. We bring students over from Matthew Alely, because it's nearby, to have story app programs once a week. We also go out into several schools with programs, with additional material. We allow teachers to check out classroom materials. Many of our teachers have teacher cards, which allow them to take twenty, thirty books at a time, install them in their classroom, let the children use them, and then bring them back and replenish them. We also do other things with the school system to assist them in accessing the library and helping them out as a part of the information services. We will, sometimes we will have our staff members go into, say, the high school and give presentations on how you can use our databases to do your school assignments and others. And again, my staff does a lot of this, so I'm not familiar with all of it, but I do know it's one of our best partnerships, and it works both ways. We do get some benefits from the school system. For example, at the new teacher session each August, we are represented there. We talk to new teachers about how the library can help them. We work with them to give them teacher cards and other materials. So, it is a back-and-forth partnership, and we're doing all we can to work with the schools in our role as an information provider for the community.
And I just can't expound upon it any greater, but just to me, that's such an important relationship, because we just met in a joint meeting with James City County Supervisors and the school board, talking about educating our children and getting them, you know, involved in reading and math, and having the great library system that we do have here, I think, really plays to an extra advantage that our kids have, and so that's a great symbiotic relationship, and so thank you for that.
One thing I do want to highlight, that your comments remind me, we have started this year working with Lafayette High School. There is a boys' reading club that was started by the assistant principal. Our friends group has provided the funds to support the copies of the material that are needed, and one of our staff members attends each session and works with them. We are looking to expand that to additional high schools as we go forward. So, this is an example of something where we are using technology, looking new approaches, and working with the school system to assist them in a project that will hopefully make better citizens out of those individuals that participate in it.
Absolutely. And this is kind of an obvious question, given where we are in this discussion today, but relative to the discussion of expansion of Stryker and then expansion of use for the library here, I've had some comments from people, uninformed people, who say, "Gosh, you know, people are going to get their books off of the internet, and we don't need the physical plant." Speak about, if you would, the use that you see, and just kind of expand on that, if you will, because I think even for myself, having been to the library a couple of times now to meet with you and look around, place is packed.
Place is packed. The book- Place is packed. The book will always be a format. It will never totally be replaced. So there'll be some need for materials and that nature. There will also be need for people to come in, get assistance from our staff as they search databases, as they do projects, as they prepare resumes. Right now, we have a good, strong core of computer classes that we offer on a monthly basis, all the way from here's a mouse, here's how you use it, up to advanced Excel and other programs to help individuals be able to better access and use the materials that they find. You will also look, we have a very strong program in our youth services department of bringing in kids, and I hate to use the term storytimes because they're really not that, they are educational programs where our staff, who are skilled in pre-learning skills and so on, work with the children through the format of telling a story or singing a song to help them develop their motor skills and other skills. We will continue to do that on a continuing basis. We are also working with our teenagers to provide programs of interest to them and to help them and help them in their studies. With expanded space, we can work more to provide for the small groups that like to come in and study together. And this does not only mean teenagers, but it means training, tutoring for literacy, for example. I can walk through the Williamsburg Library on any day, and I can see three or four people out there being tutored in English so they can get their citizenship, get a driver's license or whatever, and math tutoring and others. So that is a part of what we will continue to be. The space will be needed to meet the needs for people to come in because you come in now, and sometimes our seating is full and there are people that are waiting. And again, for programs, this is one of our emphasis in the community. We are a community center. We are a place where people can meet and discuss and learn. And we are working more in that area. Does that help you?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Judy?
John, I'll just add my voice to those saying what a wonderful library it is. And I am especially impressed with the outreach programs. And I'd like to personally thank you for continuing to have the one at Old Town Medical Center. A woman comes and reads to children in our immunization clinic, and it's just wonderful. They all get a book, too. Many of these children don't have books, so it's great. I also want to congratulate you on the museum award finalists. That's a big deal, and I know it's a big deal. My question has to do with the teen programs. My experience with teen programs is that they're really hard and really necessary. And I'm interested in any plans you have for, you know, where you're going to do it, how, what you're going to do, how you're going to do it. I'm also interested, Pete Wallantish runs a really successful summer teen program in the city, and I'd be interested in any coordination that you're thinking about.
Basically, we have just started. We hired an individual, I think about eight, nine months ago. We now have a teen advisory group that meets monthly. There have been special programs in a variety of topics of interest to teens. We're going through the process of making teens aware. We now have this. We are soliciting input from them as to what they desire. I think we had an anime program the other, a couple of days ago. And I had a note from my mother, please continue this, this is exciting and good. So we are working on what type of programs we could do, particularly in the limited space that we do have. We're working on seeing what we can get in the way of more electronic material. Again, difficult to get for the teen group. Teen programming, as you indicate, Judy, is a challenge. I am lucky to have a very talented young lady who is here working on it. I couldn't do it. This individual and others on our staff are working on it. I think you'll see some exciting things in the years to come, but we're just starting.
Thank you.
Thanks. John, thank you. And I think one thing that I've taken from this and really appreciate is your emphasis on the role that services play in the library. That, you know, the library is not just books and materials, but it's services, and those services are critical to the way that people access information and the way that you serve this community. And I think that's critically important. Following up on Paul's ebook thing, I appreciate your view. Virtually every night, I hear the other side from a publisher's standpoint about the issues. And it is, it's a terribly complex and fraught issue, but hopefully we are moving towards some resolution. But there are many issues on both sides of that, and we'll see what happens there. Mr. Vaughn is a content provider, probably has some thoughts on that as well. Again, I appreciate you bringing up the Guys Read program with the schools because, again, we often think about youth services focusing primarily on younger children and beginning readers and what have you. But just as important is getting the older teens involved. And I think that program at Lafayette and hopefully expanding to all the high schools in the region is really terrific, as you said. So, thank you for mentioning that. On the meeting space issue, I think one of the concerns I have about sort of just looking at the number of people you turn away, I think one of the things, the senses I get from talking to people in the community that over time, we've conditioned people not to even ask because they know that how hard it is. So that, yeah, you might have a number there, but you don't know how many people have said, well, we need to have a meeting. What about the library? No, they're going to be full. We go someplace else. And I think that, the sense I get from talking to people in different groups around town that that happens a lot of times.
And I agree with you. I have seen that in my own experience. And also, people will come in to a meeting and discover a parking lot's full. And some of them will turn away because of that. And this is, the challenge of providing good services is people want to come. And sometimes I think that when the program is going on, it has two hundred people come in, I think each of the two hundred came in two cars.
Yeah, I think part of that's educating people that there are two parking decks within a block and a half here. So, finally, what strikes me about going to the library is that of all the places in this community, that is, if not the most diverse, one of the most diverse, age, ethnicity, you name it, it is a diverse place in this community where all parts of the community come to meet and engage with one another. And I think that is invaluable to this community. So I think the library is a jewel in our crown, and we really do appreciate all you and your staff and your boards do to help keep it a jewel in the crown. So, thank you, John.
Well, thank you.
Any further questions?
I just want to comment, though.
Yeah.
One of Mr. Mormon's last comments made me think, if we do go ahead with Stryker and we have the expansion in the additional meeting space and parking is already at a premium right here around the facility, if we're not gaining more parking out of that project, what other plans, this isn't a library issue, this isn't a business issue, what other, either information provision or signage, or what else can we do to make sure people realize there is parking nearby?
Yeah.
Just make them aware of how to get there and how to use it.
I think that's going to have to be, if we go forward with this, that's going to have to be part of it. Because I think people think if they can't park right next to the library, you know, it's, but in fact, you know, I mean, catty corner from the library, you've got a three-deck parking garage that has plenty of space available in it. Maybe we need to think about some way that patrons of the library might use that and either reduce costs or no cost. And there is a two-level parking deck right here that is very, very seldom full, but I don't think people think about that. So I think part of it's going to be an education program as we go forward.
If I could on that, too. I believe when this site has library programming going on, and the connection will be that much closer to the parking terrace. And part of the design, of course, is that you can come directly out of the terrace, cross Boundary Street, and then be undercover as you come around to the front door. So I think the dynamic can change, but I think the, some ideas on signing it better is, we need to look at that.
Any further comments? Okay. John, thank you very much.
Well, I think the next topic.
Just stay right there, John, because you're next, too.
Wanted to give a briefing on what is listed as the fifth amended and restated contract, sort of to let you know, one, why it is being worked on, and, two, some of the changes that you will see when it gets to the state that it comes before you for consideration. The reason for this is to include York County as a signatory to the contract. Right now, we have a memorandum of agreement with them. It runs out next year, and this is a desire to bring them in on a more permanent basis, their long-term relationship with the Williamsburg Regional Library. What some of the changes will bring about is a change in the composition of the Board of Trustees. Because with this, since they would now be a part of our contractual entity, they would get one trustee, and the county would get an additional trustee to complete the whole. So that is one part. The other part is to assure you that the administrative center for the library shall be in the library building in Williamsburg. We're still working on language to see how that will work out. What you are looking at here from a funding standpoint is, within the confines of an approved budget, York County would pay eighty percent of their quote "share," and their users would get eighty percent of the benefits. Right now, they get approximately fifty percent of the benefits. There would be a new formula that goes into effect to outline how that is done is based on the formula that is used currently. And should this agreement be reached before the start of the next fiscal year, the next fiscal year would be, from a financial standpoint, under the old agreement, and then under fiscal year 2015, it would start under the new formula. And let's see, that is basically it. It is being adjusted to bring York County into our library system as a contractual entity.
So this is an ongoing negotiation, and once that reaches fruition, then it would come to us for action.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're working closely. I think before too awful long, hopefully, there will be something that will be available for both the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Board of Supervisors, your city council, and also our Library Board of Trustees.
Great, thank you. Question?
Just comment. I mean, I'm sure you wouldn't be telling us this if you weren't involved in the conversations with York County on their willingness to participate in the program. I think it's just a terrific development. It's a huge benefit to the folks who live in York County, proximate to Williamsburg, and it's also a benefit to all the library patrons in Williamsburg and James City County. So I'd like to express my appreciation and hope, appreciation to the county administrator, the staff, Board of Supervisors, for considering this, and my hope that they will follow through and adopt it. Because I just think it's another example of a more firm partnership between the jurisdictions that benefits all of the citizens and helps wipe out some of the distinctions that seem to become arbitrary based upon jurisdictional lines.
Well, thank you. And I know we have worked on this contract, and I mean, your attorney and Jack and York County attorney, and also our attorney, who happens also to be the James City County attorney. For the past almost a year, we've worked on this. And I'm very comfortable with where we are going, and I'm looking forward to seeing this come to you for your consideration.
Further questions, comments?
If I could, in the past, the original agreement and the amendments that have occurred over this time have been primarily been driven by the city and the county, working on the cost-sharing formula and the expectations of the library system and so forth. But truly this one, I need to, I'd like to publicly give John and the Library Board credit for driving this agreement. I think it's a legacy for the future of the library along the lines that Mr. Freiling just mentioned. That is a tremendous accomplishment. And it was not easy to get here over decades to this point. So again, I just want to commend Mr. Mormon in particular for his leadership to get us to this point.
John, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Our next item under City Manager Reports is a regional transportation update on the status of I-64 improvements and the status of Peninsula Rail Services.
Yes, sir. The city planner and myself will just kind of share this presentation. But a number of things have happened in the, in recent months that make this a significant time in terms of regional transportation. So Reed, if you could either hand me the clicker, that's good, that'll work. First of all, I think you're all very well familiar with the action that has been taken by the General Assembly. That means significant new revenue for transportation throughout the Commonwealth, and in particular, in the Hampton Roads region with additional one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred million dollars of additional money each and every year going forward with the changes that have taken place with the gas tax, the sales tax. Again, I don't want to get into the particulars of that, but the outcome is very important to us. This will go into effect, assuming the governor signs it, which we have every expectation that he will. Will go into effect on the first of July. We'll see the sales tax increase and the change in the gasoline tax. And that means we have an opportunity to make some significant regional decisions. So Reed, if you'll click that. The big question is, how will this new money be distributed in the Hampton Roads region? The Hampton Roads Transportation, the TPO, will play a critical role in determining that allocation between now and the May retreat of the Hampton Roads TPO. The, there will be created a short list of priorities that will be then incorporated into the existing 2034 Long Range Plan. So there is going to be a lot of discussion and negotiation between the localities and all of the interests to figure out how this will come out. So I thought, and just hot off the press, and I gave you a hard copy of it, this is dated March 12. This is the Hampton Roads Transportation Project Priorities prepared by the TPO staff. This is on the agenda for the next TPO meeting, which is next week. And, but there's a lot of good information in here, and I thought it might be something that you'd want to take some time and look at. What I'm going to do now is just point out a couple of highlights, and then we'll move and talk about rail. So on the surface transportation side, this is a chart done by the TPO, which shows the major choke points in the Hampton Roads area. These are places I think we're all familiar with, and so I won't go over them because they're pretty evident from what's on the chart. Looking at just at the interstate system, here are some of the major issues and projects at play. These are all significantly or entirely unfunded at this point in time. First, within the existing Long Range 2034 plan, shown as funded, but that means it has been included in the plan, which is a financially constrained plan. So is the improvement to sixty-four from Jefferson Avenue up to Fort Eustis. But showing that as funded does not mean dollars have been allocated to the project. It simply means in the Long Range Plan, before the new revenue came into play, that it was conceivable that this could have happened between now and 2034. So that's why I put funded in parentheses. The cost, the estimate that is in the plan now at two hundred and sixty million, the prioritization score on this section of sixty-four is one seventy-eight. The next piece is continuing on sixty-four from Fort Eustis up to one ninety-nine. Currently, this is not shown as funded in the 2034 plan. And you see a very large cost number on it that, again, relates to a total reconstruction of the roadway and widening of it and major intersection improvements. None of that has been precisely engineered at this point, carrying the same prioritization score. This project can be compared against improvements to I-64 on the south side. This is the lower part of sixty-four between Bowers Hill and six sixty-four, particularly over the High Bridge location on the south side, and a prioritization score for that project of a hundred and sixty points and a total cost of about a billion dollars in the current estimate that is in the plan. So keep that in mind. It's the major surface interstate candidate projects. You could think of it in those terms. Next slide shows the major interstate interchange improvement projects that have also been accosted out to some level and prioritized in the Hampton Roads TPO prioritization system. And you can see the relative priorities between I-64 at Fort Eustis and I-64 and two sixty-four in Virginia Beach. And then the third category is that of major crossings. And two possible projects, one, improvement to the HRB And two possible projects, one, improvement to the HRBT with a high prioritization score of 208, and a huge cost range between, depending on what is actually done, between 3.1 and 4.2 billion, compared to Patriots Crossing. And, well, Patriots Crossing essentially connects on 564 through the Navy Base and would connect into Monitor Merrimack Bridge right in the middle of the bay, and then have a connection down to Craney Island to serve the port. That project, a cost range of 4.4 to 6.7 billion dollars. We stop on that slide a second. The reason this is important, that new money in Hampton Roads of 175 million to 200 million, you could apply all of that to these projects and bond it out over time, and you still would not be able to quite pay for them. So every penny of the new money, regionally at any rate, doesn't get you there. And Reed, if you'll...
Can I ask you a question of this slide, though? Between Patriots Crossing and the modified HRBT, that's an either-or, isn't it?
Yes, it's an either-or, exactly.
Okay. Could you help me understand on Patriots Crossing, if it ties in to the Monitor Merrimack, does that include an expansion of the Monitor Merrimack between the Tyne and Newport News?
No, it would, Reed, if you'll hand me the clicker just a second, I'll use the pointer on it. Patriots Crossing project would go from the Navy Base across and tie in right there in the middle of, and tie, an interchange over the water. It would not expand the tunnel capacity. And then it would provide a connection and interchange down to Craney Island to serve the Newport facilities.
And I'm just trying to understand, I'm not being judgmental here, does that make it more of just a shortcut?
What it does is it gives, the idea is to give a relief valve, that when this is clogged up, if you're coming up from the south side up to the Peninsula, you could then go off on 564 and come around it. So it's essentially, it's designed as a relief valve in a port access project. There are two things. These projects are both similarly extremely expensive. It's also true, there's not alignment politically on the two projects. Norfolk is strongly supportive of the Patriots Crossing project, because they do not want to see HRBT expanded and all of the dislocation that causes to residents in Norfolk and additional impact, whereas other communities such as Hampton would very much like to see that occur. And so it's not, it's if the region is all lined up on one of these projects or the other, there is...
It's just, and this is where, I guess, the core of what I don't understand, Patriots Crossing is more expensive and it does not increase tunnel capacity.
That's correct.
That's, I don't live in Willoughby Spit, so it's easy for you to say that.
And of course, and it does have, and the reason, if you look, let me see, I can do this myself. You'll see that it had an extremely high prioritization score, mainly because of the economic utility of the port access and is why it did so well.
For container traffic?
For all that new container terminal and trucks going, yeah, to any area of the port. So you can see there are big issues to be decided here, and I haven't even begun to mention dozens and dozens of other projects, two primary road systems which are in this document, but will be at play in terms of how best to spend the money for the future transportation in Hampton Roads. And finally, just closing out my part, to say a word about the I-64 corridor. We all know that we're still in process of completing an environmental impact statement. At this point, the Technical Advisory Committee, on which Reed sits, representing Williamsburg, is sending on to the TPO board a recommendation that Alternative 1A be adopted, and that provides for outside widening and general purpose lanes rather than toll lanes, with the caveat, and I think this came primarily from Mr. Nestor, that it be done in a context-sensitive design, and that the project be phased over time. So again, that's what's going to be coming to the TPO from the Technical Advisory Committee. You can see the cost estimates for the whole 75-mile corridor are huge, from 4.7 to 7.3 billion. This is assuming major reconstruction of this roadway and expansion. And finally, the last point there is that the TPO staff is recommending to VDOT that they consider an interim widening to six lanes, one lane in either direction, on existing right-of-way, but done in such a way that it does not preclude a future massive improvement as contemplated in the EIS. And so this could be done in dollars as low as about $5 million per mile, which, the kind of numbers we're talking about, is not a lot of money. So that is at play now, but again, nothing has been decided yet, either at the policy level or at the staff level at TPO and VDOT, and a lot's going to be happening over the next few months determining our transportation future. So maybe I ought to stop before we go to rail and see whatever.
Unless, some comments.
Just one more Patriots Crossing question. When it's coming across from the naval base to Tyne to Monitor Merrimack, is there a tunnel component there?
Yes, there is a tunnel component under the Elizabeth River, because you still have to get...
You start to keep the shipping lines free.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
That's one of the reasons it's expensive.
It's so expensive.
I would imagine the interchange above the water is...
It's also...
Too bad it's not at Bush Gardens.
Our water country. Scott?
Further discussion we had on Monday. How does that factor in with the, talk to me about coming in on the median versus buying right-of-way on the outside with the recommendation from the technical committee?
Okay. The environmental impact statement, once it's approved by the federal government, it simply says, you can build up to this and it meets environmental tests. So putting the huge project, the big, extremely expensive, none of us in our lifetime expect to see happen, project, putting that in the EIS is not a problem, because it says, anything that essentially you do less impact than that is within that. So that's why the, it's not inappropriate to do what they're doing, even though it's not realistic from a... And also, the concept that is being promoted by the TPO staff is, in most cases, it would be on the inside, because that's where the land is, but in some areas, it could be on the outside where there's additional, there is paving, essentially what a shoulder area today, to create a third lane, that's still going to have to meet current safety requirements for interstates. And so that's the big question, and no one has done the engineering on that nor answered that question, whether that is achievable in this section of roadway.
And the other question that remains there, too, is about existing interchanges. Could that be done without terrific modification of the intersections, whereas the, the, the prime, the sky, for lack of a better term, project basically modifies every interchange, basically, you know, creates, just like Jefferson Avenue, interchanges pretty much all the way up. That's a very expensive way to do it.
Yeah, it seemed to me we should take the path of least resistance, you know, so it's...
Jack, if you would, go back to the one that shows the environmental impact and then the staff recommendation on the bottom. Yeah. That TPO staff recommendation, really, I think from our standpoint, is the most likely to happen. If we're going to see a widening to Richmond in our lifetime, that's the way it's going to happen, because the other way, I just, you know, it's a lot of money.
Context-sensitive design, what does that mean? Well, that means that you don't design the roadway and then meeting all the engineering and safety standards, and then when you're all done, you come back and say, oh, let's put a little bit of landscaping on this. Let's consider the aesthetics of it. Let's think about that when you've done the, at the end of the process. It says right from the beginning, when you're doing the design, you think about aesthetic considerations, and you, and then you make the decision of how to design the roadway in the context of that particular section of real estate. And so that's what it means.
And I appreciate that, because in that, having that in there doesn't impede getting the project done, it just, it puts in as a placeholder that we should be sensitive to that design element. So I, because in some conversations I've had, people are saying, oh, you know, we want to protect the green space in the middle, and that has stymied the expansion of 64, and I don't think that that's the case. And having that in there doesn't do that.
I'll make one other comment, too. I think part of the discussion that we'll be having in the coming months, right now, 64 on the Peninsula is ahead of the game of 64 on the south side, because we are nearing the end of the EIS process. But on the agenda for the TPO next week is a recommendation that the 2034 Plan be amended to put 64s on the south side in and fund $5 million to begin the EIS process. So, you know, the gates open and the horses are out, and this will be an interesting thing to watch, to see just what gets funded and what doesn't.
And to that, I think, you know, we in our tri-jurisdictional area ought to be, you know, banding together as much as we can to carry as much influence as we can, you know, up and down this corridor, so that these projects, you know, don't get lost by other, you know, constituents that have a louder voice. Squeaky wheel gets that grease. So I think we ought to all be prepared to carry on this discussion.
If the proposed improvements on 64 between south side and 664 are eventually approved and accomplished, and we still haven't achieved either of the crossings, does that improved capacity undermine the value of Patriots Crossing compared to the HRBT?
Right. Well, it's a good question. There is now in the new money, you could make significant improvements on 64, on South 64, the interchange of 64 and 264. I mean, a lot of these improvements can be done, and on the primary system around within that money, if you don't spend it all on the crossings. But then the obvious question is, do you not have two huge choke points here that just cripple the whole system? I think the argument can be made that the times that the capacity issues occur here are the rush hour, and if you could use some demand tolling just during those rush hours, not enough money to really build much of anything, but just enough money to take discretionary trips where people then would choose not to commute between 6:30 and 8:30 in the morning, that they would defer that trip when they had the opportunity to, that could make this whole system work, and by maximizing the throughput on the crossings that we do have, if we are unable to fund the billions upon billions for a new crossing wherever it goes. I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that's...
Not exactly, but it was...
So in other words, I believe if you, there are other ways to deal with this and still make all of these improvements, make the system work so much better.
And I think a lot of the discussion is going to come down to trying to balance those two, the crossings versus the other improvements, and where do we want to spend the money that's going to come out of this new transportation bill? So I think there are going to be some very interesting TPO meetings for the next few months.
Right. Okay, now, we also have some news on rail, and I'll let Reed do this.
And this, I think, is talking more about visioning issues and scheduling issues, because there's not a whole lot in the way of the schedule now. So I wore my bike tie today, so that qualifies me to talk about passenger rail, I guess. Thelma Drake was at a meeting recently down at the PDC and going over some of the things that DRPT is looking at and talking about the governor's funding bill, $54 million a year for the inner-city passenger rail operating and capital fund, otherwise known as Iproc, I guess. I had to write it up there so I could remember what it meant. But that's funding for continued and expanded inner-city passenger rail service, train service to Roanoke, trains two and three for Norfolk, track performance improvements, Richmond to Newport News, Richmond to the DC area. Of course, one of the big bottlenecks, I think, is in the Richmond to DC area segment, probably even more so than in the Newport News to Richmond segment. The state will continue to support two state-supported services operating today, the Lynchburg and Norfolk service, and was pointed out that the Lynchburg service is turning a profit now. And Virginia will support four additional legacy trains, including, which includes the trains coming down the Peninsula that are operated today by Amtrak. I think the best news for the Peninsula is that the new Newport News station at Land Boulevard is moving along, and that is estimated to have construction completed in July of '27, 2017, and train service initiated in January of 2018. So I think having a major capital project for rail service to the Peninsula is a really good thing for the Peninsula, and of course, for Williamsburg. This is a conceptual site layout for the station with Interstate 64, Land Boulevard, so there'd be a track where the trains could back up and turn around, so they don't have to go all the way down to the end. The terminal is going to be over in this area, so that will be a major upgrade in train service in Newport News. And finally, this is just sort of a summary of system development steps, and the DRPT focus are the two on the top. Step one is the shared track coming down the Peninsula and schedule enhancement, and for south side, the shared track along Route 460 that's now under use as they've opened service to Norfolk. The step two, where there is now a final environmental impact statement, that has, adds one train per day to the Peninsula, and for the south side, that increases speed up to 90 miles an hour with six trains per day. Now this, the total capital cost for these projects runs $475 million, and with an estimated ride share of $940,000 to $1.1 million. There's no exact schedule for that, particularly for the Peninsula that I am aware of. Looking into the future and the focus on high-speed rail, the step three improvement shows four to six trains on the Peninsula up to 90 mile-an-hour speed with shared track, increasing in step four to 110 miles an hour, six to nine trains with dedicated track, and both of these alternatives using the new Newport News station. And then more improvement, south side, with finally up 12 to 16 trains a day, shown possibly to Norfolk, 150 mile-an-hour speed. So that's a, just a quick summary of things that are being looked at now. You know, not a lot of hard data out there as far as exact schedule go for improvements.
Thank you, rail. Reed, rail, Reed.
Ray, let's go on, Ray.
All you serve is our representative to Virginia for high-speed rail, so I'll let you take it from there.
A couple of comments. On this slide in particular, the bottom three categories would be wonderful to achieve at some point, but they're probably, especially the last two, are quieter ways down the road. The first block up there with step one is... The first block up there with step one is really important, because by, and the enhanced scheduling, that's talking about the competition between passenger traffic and freight traffic on shared track between Newport News and Richmond, and maintaining a, a speed of 79 miles an hour. I, I think the speed now, if you, when you go through the train yards, it's a little bit slower than you can walk, but the overall speed's somewhere around 45 miles per hour. So, that, that would be a, a big enhancement. The difference between 79 and 90 between Williamsburg and Richmond is not that significant from a time-saving standpoint. So, that, that first block really is a, makes a big deal for, on the reliability of the traffic and the speed with which you can get from here to Richmond. Going back to the, one of the first slides that Reed was showing, where he got the information about, right here, the, I don't know that most people understand the importance of what the General Assembly did in their recent legislation for transportation in funding what I believe they call IPROC. The, the fund has been there for a number of years, but there's never been any money there to support rail service. But by having the fund there, there was at least a, a vehicle set up or a containment area where money could be put into, it could then be used for rail service. The issue here is that federal rail money for inner-city passenger rail is going away. And so, if we did not have state funding, we would lose that existing train service that we currently have between Newport News and Washington, which I think would be a, just a, well, I want to overstate it, but be a real shame. And so, but General Assembly's action at least dedicates a source of ongoing revenue that can be applied to those routes, along with the, the others that, that we currently have. The Lynchburg route is already funded by the state. But having that, that state money to pick up where the federal government is pulling away is a, is a big deal for people who live in Williamsburg and Newport News. Now, I just think any opportunity we have to, I know it was a difficult conversation in Richmond, there was a lot of negotiation, there were people on both sides that were probably dissatisfied, but they, they at least did what they could for transportation. I think any opportunity we have to thank our senators, Senator and delegate, we should take advantage of that. Because this, I don't want, again, overstate that, but this is a, this transportation funding overall is a huge step, and one that we haven't taken in the last generation.
Scott?
I've sat on the train between going to Richmond and Paul's questioning how fast it was, and it's about the speed of smell. You're hardly outrun, hardly outrunning your diesel fuses. But this is particularly important to me, because from a historical perspective, the one rail line serving the, serving the peninsula is the same one that has been there since prior to the Civil War. What else have we, yeah, 1880? So, what else have we not improved since 1880? I mean, it's just, it's just grossly irresponsible to me, and I echo Paul's point about the, that first, first line there being really essential, especially for economic development of the peninsula, because if you can't reliably get to DC and Wash, I mean, to, from, to Richmond and DC, in, you know, as a commuter, you know, we're always going to be, you know, kind of a backwater, and that pertains to 64, 95, and, and the rail. I think as time goes, goes on, rail will only become more important, so. I am glad that there's some money there, but I, I think as, as time goes on, that we will hopefully see a continued emphasis and investment in this.
Thanks. Doug?
Judy? The whole time, we were having the conversation about roads and all the money it's costing and everything. I was sitting here thinking that a few weeks ago, we went to New York on the train, and it was so much better than driving on 95. There isn't even any comparison between the two kinds of travel, and we, we should be spending all that money on trains, not on roads, is really the way I feel about it. So, I'm, I'm with Paul, delighted that we now have this source of revenue, and I'm delighted that more people are thinking about trains. The conductor on the train was a riot. "You don't have to go up in the air," he said. "We're just going to go up." So, so it's a, it's a good way to travel. I think it's getting better. I'd like to see more and more improvements, because I think it's one of the answers to our transportation problems. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I think I speak for counsel when I say that this transportation bill is historic in many ways, both funding, but also in, in its broad reach in terms of transportation, not just roads, but rail as well. And we have our representatives to the General Assembly to thank for being supportive of this, and, and now, now the hard work starts to make sure that the money goes where it needs to go to benefit this community. Thank you, Jack and Reed, for your presentations. Our next order of business under City Manager Reports is voting precinct name change, and this is proposed ordinance 13-03. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have the map available?
Yes. It's right here.
There it is. I can't see it, because I'm looking the other way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, and Fred Siegel and Lynn Satter, Fred, Vice Chairman of the Board of Electors and Electoral Board, and Lynn Satter, who is our registrar here. This is a very simple request. Four years ago, we divided the two precincts, which are among the largest precincts in the state of Virginia, into two, and we have what we think is, is ideal, a balance as we could get, given the way the railroad line runs in this city, in York County. We would simply like to ask that the name change be made so that we don't confuse Stryker District and William, I mean, Berkeley District and Williamsburg with the two Berkeley districts in Jame City County, and that has happened on a number of occasions. And because we think that Chief Powhatan's daughter's name is much better than Governor Berkeley's name. But basically, it's a simple name change, and.
Well.
It'll be very brief, unless you want me to tell you that we really appreciate the support you've given us in the past few years to upgrade with optical scanners, with the support the city manager gave us, and getting relocated into the new precinct, which is the United Methodist Church on Jamestown Road, which has made a significant difference, and which has provided us with services that we've, we couldn't have dreamed of, but it's just excellent service. And we're about equally divided between the two precincts. So, all we're asking is, can we get Chief Powhatan's daughter in the works?
Thanks, thank you, Tom.
If, if I can, Mr. Mayor. This requires city council action, because the city council named the precincts Stryker and Berkeley, and so the city code has to be amended if council desires to change the name from Berkeley to Matoka. And council should also adopt an updated precinct map as shown with the new name change in it. This does not require preclearance, because we are now exempt from preclearance. There are notification requirements that the registrar of voters has to meet as a result of this change. It does not change any boundaries associated with precincts.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, again, that this is, makes a lot of sense, and, and again, having experienced several elections at, with the new equipment, I think the registrar and the electoral board and, and the poll workers deserve a lot of credit, because the system works extremely well, extremely efficiently here, and, and I know a lot of effort goes into that, but it pays off in terms of the, the way the electoral process works here.
One other matter is that IT and Ted Lyman helping us with the map made the balancing out of the two precincts so much easier than it might have been, and we're deeply indebted to IT for that, that kind of assistance.
Great.
And by the way, I'm trying to get the state to change the name from poll workers to officers of election, because they are constitutional officers.
Will support you. Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 13-03.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nudson.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frinlin.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye. Our next report is city attorney report on oversized and overweight vehicles, proposed ordinance 13-02.
One of the changes that the General Assembly made in 2012 was to reserve the right for the Commonwealth to issue permits for overweight or oversized vehicles over streets and roads in the Commonwealth. The exception to that is for cities that maintain their own road system. The city has traditionally issued permits, and the staff feels like it would be appropriate for the city to continue to do that. In order to continue to do that, we have to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Motor Vehicles that provides for certain requirements that the city has to meet in issuing those permits. Essentially, what happens is we then become part of DMV's system. They can issue permits, they collect the fee for the city of Williamsburg on behalf of the city, and remit that back to the city. There is a standard MOU that they use. Most of the changes that are necessary are administrative in nature. What's before city council are the few changes that need to be made to that particular section of the city code in order to effectuate entering into the MOU with the Department of Motor Vehicles. And so, there are things like making, issuing permits subject to the particular provision of the state code that allows it, that the city manager needs to issue a list of streets where overweight vehicles or oversized vehicles are not permitted, and that the Department of Motor Vehicles may collect the overweight permit fee on behalf of the city and remit it to the city, and that would happen within 30 days of its collection. And so, the staff recommendation is that council adopt these technical changes to Chapter 11 of the city code in order to allow us to move forward with the administrative end of this.
Great. Thank, thank you, Chris. Any questions, comments? It's pretty straightforward. If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt amended proposed ordinance 13-02.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nudson.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frinlin.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any new business? If not, that brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum, a time which anyone who is, is to address council on any matter may do so. If you'd like to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, do we have anything for closed session today?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Nudson.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frinlin.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.